And join us in the pledge of allegiance, excuse me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to our October 22nd meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. My name is Andy Hunthausen. To my left, Commissioner Tom Rolfe. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
To his left is Brandy Spangler. She'll be taking care of us today. Good morning, Brandy. And Greg McNally, who is the Director of Planning and Community Development. Morning, Greg. To my right, Commissioner Candace Payne. We have Deputy County Attorneys Nico Hash and Keegan Shea with us today. Good morning, gentlemen. And Chief Administrative Officer Roger Baltz. Good morning. Again, there is a sign-in sheet in the front as well as agendas. Please sign in prior to leaving today, and we will make sure we have a good record of who's been here today. We have on the agenda one consent action item. However, I think there's some interest in discussing that item, so we're going to pull that off consent and address it as a regular item. Is that okay with you two commissioners?
You bet.
Okay. Surprise, surprise, Mr. Cornwell.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
If I could, Commissioners, maybe I could just join Mr. Cornwell for this item as we introduce it. So the requested action
Yeah.
from the Commissioners this morning is for you to approve a budget amendments for October of 2024. And as has been placed in your packet today, this is a part of a strategy that we're recommending to the county commissioners to deal with the cost associated with our group health plan and the fund that we operate that takes care of those expenditures. We've seen an ongoing claims experience that's been much higher than we've had for some time. It's been going on for about two years now, and we've been using a variety of different strategies to deal with that. And Commissioners, if I could remind you, when we went through our budget sessions a few months ago, we had quite a few discussions about this challenge that we're seeing within the organization and some strategies that we could be using. And I just wanted to add that in addition to these amendments, we are proceeding with a strategy to bring in some contracted services, some experts to do an actuarial review of what is occurring with our self-funded group health plan. And that's a part of why you see this action on the agenda today. But as far as the details of this amendment, I just wanted to open by stating that and letting you know that. And if it's all right with you, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cornwell now, and we'll be ready to answer any questions we can. Thank you.
Thank you. So the item would have been a consent action item for budget amendments for October 2024, and we're moving that to a regular item. So thank you for the introduction, Mr. Baltz. Mr. Cornwell, do you have further introduction and explanation, please? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Frank Cornwell, CFO of the county. This is the first consent action item I've seen brought up to this level. So this might be a little bit complicated. This is accounting speak and finance speak, so I'll try my best to simplify this. But to address these issues that CAO Baltz was just talking about, we are experiencing higher claims than expected this year, especially early on. And so these budget amendments are to address those higher claims. We have seen, we were fortunate enough this year when we had the Law and Justice Center remodel. When that was completed, that came under budget by $320,000. And at a discussion with CAO Baltz, we decided that we were going to use those savings from that remodel to move those funds. And that's the $320,000 that you see in the amendment, moving from the basically, instead of doing a general fund CIP transfer into the general fund CIP, we're not going to need to do that this year because we have these savings. We're going to end up using those savings and moving them to the health group plan fund. So that's the first piece. And then the other piece is we're going to move half a million dollars from the contingency fund, which is at a million and a half right now with cash, with a cash balance of a million and a half. This would draw it down to a million. And that's the second piece. So it's a total of $820,000 moving from the general fund savings from the CIP project or the legislature or from the Law and Justice Center and half a million dollars from the contingency fund. And that hopefully, fingers crossed, should get us to the end of the year, and we won't have to worry about doing any more budget amendments. I would like to add to CAO Baltz's comment about the actuary. We are going to be meeting hopefully with our actuary within the next couple of weeks and getting a real sense from their expertise viewpoint. And they have a lot of experience with plans our size, and they're going to tell us what our reserves need to be, they'll give us suggestions on as to what our rates should be with our personnel and all of that going forward. So a lot of work to be done, but we're really confident. And I think it's a really good idea to bring this actuary in, to give us this expertise, to make sure that this fund is fully funded, and we won't have to worry about these budget amendments going forward. We're hopeful that that strategy will help solidify this fund and get it squared away into the future.
Thank you for the explanation. And part of why we're here today is process. So we set our budget back in July essentially. And now if we're proposing a change to that budget, we need to bring that forward in a public setting, talk about it, and make sure that the public has opportunity to participate in that change. How about questions? Commissioner Rolfe?
Just, I just would like to, first of all, I want to apologize. I kind of threw this at you right off the bat, Frank. But I just feel like the public needs to know how hard the staff works to keep from raising taxes. And what you've come up with here, we have the right to just raise taxes to take care of our employees' health care. But the staff came up with this other option to take some money out of reserve and some unspent money to do that instead of raising taxes higher. And I just, I just want the public to know how hard you all, how hard the CAO, Mr. Baltz, works to try and do it, do everything as reasonably and as cost efficiently and without raising taxes whenever we can. And I want to thank you for that. And I want to thank the whole staff, because I think our staff really tries to do it right. And I believe that Lewis and Clark County is probably the most financially solvent, small government, local government in the whole state of Montana. And thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for your heart of trying to help the taxpayers.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, thank you so much. And it is, it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of coordination with staff, and staff works very hard. And I can attest to what you're saying. I see it every day. Our staff is very diligent with their budgets, and it is not uncommon to see almost all the budgets succumb under budget, well under budget. And we're able to build up these reserves to where we have this opportunity to move those reserves from the performance of our departments, because they're able to come under budget. We're able to use these and use these opportunities to backfill these unfortunate, unexpected events where it's out of our control, these claims, this claim demand. We talk about it, Roger and I, and HR with Carrie DeRozier, she, we talk about what can we do to get these claims down? There's really not a lot that we can do. We do as much as we possibly can. We do the health screenings, and we talk to staff, and we try to make sure that they understand that it's important to take care of themselves and try to keep their, you know, keep their health intact and live a healthy lifestyle. But, you know, these claims are, they're very, very unexpected. Every time I see one and hear about how we got there, it blows me away that, you know, you think, oh, you know, we just need to do one thing, and it'll fix it, and it won't happen. It's just, these are unexpected. They are events that cannot do anything about. And it's just, we're very fortunate to be able to have these savings, to have these departments doing this, doing the hard work and making really good decisions to protect the county finances.
Well, again, if I might just follow up, just, I thank you for your heart to do the most we can possible without raising taxes. And I would just really appreciate the great work of the whole staff in that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments at this time? Mr. Cornwell, thank you very much. And thank you, Commissioner, for your comments. I agree. So this is budget amendments for October 2024. They were just explained. Is there any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion, please, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'm proud to move to approve the budget amendment, October of 24, as explained by Mr. Cornwell.
Second.
Movement seconded to approve the budget amendments as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners?
I would like to make one comment. I'm not sure it's entirely clear. There may be other people out there who do not understand what this money's going for. We have older people on our health insurance plan. And whether they're old or they're young, if they're dying of cancer, or if they've, you know, that's what this is going for. We've got to come up with enough money to cover their insurance. Part of the budget for Lewis and Clark County, we have to keep people who want to work here. And if they don't like it here, they'll go to the state or go to wherever. But it behooves us, we don't, maybe we don't pay everybody as much as Brand X, but we offer this really good health insurance plan, and that helps keep people working for our county. So we're not always retraining. And so when you look at this budget, it isn't, no, it's not for building roads or buying tires. It's for trying to help keep our employees here so we don't have to retrain, so we don't have to have somebody in there that doesn't know what they're doing. And I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Health insurance is a very important part of our package that we provide for our employees to keep them here, working for us.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I would just add that similar comments, it's great when we can address a problem by finding internal ways through savings and doing more with what we have rather than trying to find new revenues. So very, very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate your work on this, Mr. Baltz, you as well. And Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, I think the reason the crowd's here, we have an update on the Unionville School American Rescue Plan Project. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Pam Matardo, and I am the Heritage Preservation Officer for the city and county. And I am introducing here a group of people. There are Unionville residents and volunteers who have been involved in the Unionville School ARPA project since November of 2022, when the community first approached the Lewis and Clark County Heritage Tourism Council with its concern for the Unionville School's structural integrity due to the severely Boeing North Wall. In the Heritage Tourism Council, with considerable help with from Unionville volunteers, submitted a grant application in March 2023 for $100,000 in county ARPA funds to repair the school. That grant was successful, along with an additional 10,000 of ARPA funds for unexpected additional costs. The intent of the project was to stabilize the building and make it accessible for use as a community gathering place. The Heritage Tourism Council received an additional $5,000 grant from the Foundation for Montana History for the school as well. The school building started its life as the mine office for the IXL Mine Company in Park City, which was located just a bit down the road from its present location. So it dates to 1866. In 1872, the mine and mill suffered a catastrophic fire, and the school was then sold to Unionville residents, who moved it to its present location as a school. The Unionville School functioned as a school until the 1950s, when dwindling student matriculation resulted in its closure, and students became part of Helena School District Number One. I would like to introduce Anna Baker of Unionville. She has been invaluable in this project since its inception. Anna has worked tirelessly to get this project started, keep it going, and get to the finish line, so the community may gather there. Anna has volunteered an incredible amount of hours, and this project would have been nearly impossible without her. Thank you, Anna, for your partnership and buy-in on this project. And Anna does have a PowerPoint that she'd like to show you, great photographs, and I'm going to get that started for her. Yes, you're going to come up right after. Oh, yeah, do you want to? Yes, absolutely. I'm just going to start it while you're.
Come on up, Anna. If you'd introduce yourself for the record, that'd be great.
Good morning. I'm Anna Baker, resident of Unionville. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. First of all, thank you on behalf of our entire community for making this project possible. We received the grants in 2023, and we've been hard at work ever since. Last fall, we moved the school to the side, excavated, poured a foundation, and returned the school to sit on the new foundation. We abated the asbestos, rewired, repaired the large windows, and rebuilt the window wall. We have rebuilt all compromised aspects of the structure, the framing, floor joists, roof structure, and siding, and have repainted the exterior. The entire site has been graded, adding proper drainage and access ramps. We built historically appropriate steps at both doors using large granite blocks from the original Helena High School. We built a cupola, which will support and protect the bell, to be installed on the roof of the school in 2025. We still need about $10,000 to finish, and we're actively soliciting donations. We'll also be applying for a Tracy Foundation grant. As a woodworker, I'm going to relate this project to trees. Trees that grow alone have to weather storms, insects, fire alone. In a grove of trees, they protect one another and form communities. Thanks to Lewis and Clark County, Unionville has two community spaces to gather, the Unionville Schoolhouse and the Whitlock Fire Station. These spaces are where we share meals, music, laughter, and a love of place. It is because of these gathering spaces that our people work together and laugh together. Not all communities are so lucky. Just like a forest of trees, our community supports one another because we have spaces to come together and be a community. The work of rebuilding the schoolhouse has brought us even closer as a community. Huge thanks to you three, Chairman Hunthausen, Commissioner Rolfe, and Commissioner Payne. Thank you to Pam Matardo and Greg McNally, and all the county employees who helped with this project. Thank you to the contractors and countless volunteers who helped save and restore the school. A special thank you to Scott Walter, Tom Waters, and Wally Jester, who stood next to me in every aspect of this restoration project. Thank you, Unionville, for over 1,400 hours of volunteer labor and a myriad of donations. I am so excited to celebrate with you all when the bell rings throughout Unionville. Good. We have a short slide presentation showing some history of the schoolhouse, our community, and the restoration work.
Wow. Fantastic. Anna, you better come, better come back up. There might be some questions and comments. Yes, it'll make your eyes water. I don't know, it must be something in the air. I don't know what it is, but that was pretty special. Thank you very much. And it really speaks to community and how we must work together too. So this was a great partnership. I mean, the money's one thing, but I think about this building and what might have happened if it didn't have the community to love it like you've just described and just performed. We probably would not have been able to do what you have done. And so without it being done together, it probably wouldn't have happened. So good on you, and thank you so much. And you can tell that you love your community and you love this space. So wonderful.
Mr. Chairman, I think that the commission should give you, the people of Unionville, who put the sweat equity in to make this a reality, give you an applause. Thank you very much.
Good on you. Commissioner, anything you'd like to?
I was kind of surprised to see that I was included in this lovely slideshow. I accidentally went out there. I mean, I didn't actually, I was intentionally going there. I just didn't know that there was going to be people around and actually working. And so I've got a lot more information about what was going on in Unionville than I expected. And as a new county commissioner, I did not understand the strength of the communities that not only Unionville, but there are a lot of small communities out there. And the people out there, they may not always get along, but they are still a community. They work together to make it a better place. I'm from eastern Montana, and, you know, a place like Antelope and Dagmar and Reserve and Reed Point, they have communities like that. I moved to Helena temporarily 30 years ago, thinking, oh, it's a big city. Nobody knows anybody around here. They do. And it is a community. And there are even communities within Helena. So one of the best things about living in Montana is your sense of community, no matter where you live. But it certainly is brought to our attention by the actions you've taken in Unionville. So thank you for your efforts at being a community in a time when many of us, particularly on television during a election year, all we see is controversy, and the other side is bad guys, and we're the good guys, and what do you, I am so sick of that. And so this is refreshing. Thank you for your timing and getting us this way.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anything else you want to add? Okay, so I have a question or two for you. So you, I think you may have spoken about it, but do you have an idea of how many people actually participated? Either came out and got a photo shoot or actually picked up a hammer? No, Commissioner, now that you're in the pictures, you can say, oh, yeah, I worked on that building. Yeah, it was all me.
I helped approve funding, if I will remind you. That was the most important thing I could do.
I'm just kidding. Yeah, not that you have to know. I just thought it would be interesting to hear how many folks came up.
Somewhere between 30 and 50 people, maybe, at various stages. There was a lot, there were two feet of snow inside the foundation after it was poured, the day before it was supposed to move back. So we had about 30 people that day who came to help shovel out the foundation.
Well, you have everybody, I mean, it takes everyone. So somebody might have brought sandwiches one day, and another day, somebody spent a lot of time up on the roof or whatever it was. So it takes everyone. Well, wonderful. Good on you. And this is fantastic. How about, you said $10,000 left, and that will finish it out. What are we expecting for, I guess, fully open, fully done? Is there still some things to finish? Or is it usable now? Kind of just give people an idea of what.
Mr. Chairman, it is not yet usable. There's some interior work, an electrical trimout that remains. It needs to be seated. We need to install some handrails. The front room still needs some finishes. We need some sort of protective strip carpeting and things before we welcome the public back in. And that's about, as best I can figure, about $10,000 to get it to completion.
Great. Commissioners, any further questions? Well, your slideshow made me think of one thing, and that is, you know, why not add another picture to the bunch? So if everyone from Unionville wants to come up here in front, I think we should get a picture together. Why not? And somebody's, somebody's got a phone or a camera, right? Roger or Greg, somebody bring their camera. Come on up.
We're doing this.
Yeah, we need that baby in here.
Yeah, we need that baby in here.
Come on, let's come up here and give us. Come on up.
Say Unionville.
I'd like to recognize somebody else. Glenn Kenny worked on the school in twenty fifteen. Along with Wally Chester.
Yes. Sure. I wanted to recognize a couple of people who are here who worked on the school in twenty fifteen when we re-roofed it and scraped it down and repainted it. Glenn Kenny and Wally Chester. Thank you.
All right, I think we're good.
Thanks for all you.
Wally, thank you. All right, bring it up.
Very good.
He wants you to donate the school bill?
No, he said there's still.
I'll tell you after. Thank you, Unionville community. Can't wait to see the finished product.
Bye.
And you're all welcome to stay if you'd like, but we understand if you need to roll away. All right. That was wonderful. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the final plat application for amended parcels of P one and P two, amending the lot P two K of the Han Trac subdivision. Mr. Gonzalez, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. Phil Gonzalez here with Community Development and Planning. As you mentioned, I am presenting the final plat, the amended parcels P one, P two, amending lot P two K of the Han Trac subdivision, subsequent minor subdivision application number twenty twenty four dash seven. The applicant is Lawrence Alexis Lasowski and the representative on the application was Gary Lasowski. As you will likely remember, here's the vicinity map of the proposed project, the hatchmark area is the existing lot, P two K, which we are discussing today, addressed as A four five Cheryl, a one acre lot containing one single family residence. The existing twenty lot major subdivision referred to as the amended parcels P one, P two of Han Trax received final plat approval on May eleventh of two thousand and six by the Board of County Commissioners. These lots have since been mostly developed with predominantly single family uses. On June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, the applicant submitted a subsequent minor subdivision application in order to decrease the length of a no access restriction along their lots of the amended parcels P one, P two, that subdivision. The approved preliminary plat application sought to reduce that length of that no access restriction from a hundred and forty eight feet to ninety eight feet, a fifty foot reduction, giving the applicant access to Michelle Drive in addition to access to Cheryl Road. That preliminary plat subdivision application was approved by this commission on August twenty ninth of twenty twenty four. And I'm here presenting that final plat application. From this aerial image, which we've referenced before, shows that lot P two K, the highlighted area with the no access restriction existing along that western side of the property. Again, this aerial image shows that decreased portion of that no access restriction by fifty feet along that western side of the property. And again, Chairman Commissioners, here's the proposed preliminary plat. The applicant has submitted for this final plat application. As you can see, it represents lot P two K with that fifty foot portion abandoned slash eliminated along that western side of the property. The preliminary plat application was approved by this commission with three conditions. Those conditions since have been met and are provided in the analysis portion of the staff report. I'll briefly go through them for you. The first condition was to submit a final plat in accordance with the applicable state survey requirements. That condition has been met. The second condition was for the applicant to provide documentation, the legal and lawful ownership of the property. That condition has been met. And the third condition was the approval period of the preliminary approval would be enforced for three calendar years before expiring as a final plat application has been submitted prior to that. That condition has been met. And as a result of all those conditions being met, staff is recommending approval. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for? Mr. Gonzalez, appreciate it. Great explanation. And now that we're at final plat, and as you've just described, all the conditions have met. We are free to move forward today. There's no necess, necessary delay. Sorry. Can't get those words out together. Necessary. All right. Commissioners, anything further? Yes.
One question. Have we had any objections to this? Amendment?
Chairman Commissioners, through the preliminary plat application that we reviewed over the summer, we didn't receive any public comment. There was a public noticing process. With a sign posted, it was in the IR classifieds and then a, all the adjacent property owners were notified through that process application. No public comment was received. And then after that was approved, the final plat application submitted and there's no public noticing process for that application. So other than anyone who might be here today to object, there wouldn't be anything that I'd be aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments, questions? All right. How about public comment on this final plat application? Any public comment? Or if the applicant would like to make any comments, welcome to. Any, any public comment? Any public comment? Okay. Hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the final plat application for amended parcels P one and P two, amending lot P ta, lot P two K of the Han Trac subdivision subdivision two, twenty twenty four dash zero zero seven as presented by Mr. Gonzalez.
Second, Mr. Chair. Moved in second to approve the final plat application as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners. Just like to say thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. And this seems like, I'm looking out at the applicant now. It seems like quite a process to go through to reduce a no access area by fifty feet. But if we don't go through this process, then you know, it isn't documented properly potentially. Potentially it is could be challenged at some point in the future. And this gives us a more durable decision in terms of making sure that we've crossed our Ts and dotted our Is, met the conditions of approval, gone through the process as it's laid out statute. And hopefully it will be a long lasting decision. But there is a process we had to go through. So sorry about that, but it, it's part of the deal. All right, Commissioners, anything else? All right, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you very much. Good luck. All right. Next item on the agenda. It's a request to ma, a request for modification of conditions, conditions of approval for Copper Smith subdivision. Copper Smith is the first one up.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. For the record, my name is Rachel Ward. I'm a planner with Community Development and Planning. Before you this morning is a request to modify condition of approval number six B that's tied to four separate subdivisions known as the Aerosmith subdivision, the Blacksmith subdivision, the Copper Smith subdivision, and the Ward Smith subdivision. All four of these subdivisions were reviewed concurrently, approved on November twenty fourth, twenty twenty, and extended to November twenty fourth, twenty twenty six. All four of these subdivisions use an interconnected internal and external road network. And all four of the subdivisions include condition of approval number six B, which requires that the approach on Espony Drive be expanded to a three lane approach to include a northbound lane, a combined south and eastbound lane, and a westbound lane. And it's that requirement that the applicant, Mr. Kim Smith, is requesting to remove. Because all four of these subdivisions were approved individually, we will have to go through each subdivision modification and hold public, public hearings for each of the subdivisions separately. But before we dive into that, I just want to give a brief explanation of the modification process. So chapter three, B sixteen of the subdivision regulations outlines the process for modifying conditions of approval or preliminary plats that have been conditionally approved. For those modifications that are not determined to be substantial changes, the applicant can request a modification to the preliminary approval, after which staff will review all of the pertinent information pertaining to the change and how it relates to the subdivision review criteria. This process includes requests from affected agencies, notices to adjacent landowners, and noticed of the public hearing for, in this case, a major subdivision. The regulations allow the applicant to request to have the modification reviewed as an optional first step. And as you remember, Mr. Smith opted into that and you heard and approved that request on September nineteenth and September twenty fourth. So with some of that background information, I'll, I'll dive into a, first off, a few illustrations. On the bottom left is a vicinity map. You can see that these four subdivisions are located on Canyon Ferry Road between Valley Drive and Lake Helena Drive. The illustration on the right shows the four subdivisions Aerosmith is in red, Blacksmith in orange, Copper Smith in green, and Mart Smith in blue. And you can see that interconnected road network there as well. So with that, I'll dive into the, the first subdivision here. It pertains to the Copper Smith subdivision. This subdivision will create three single family lots and eleven duplex lots with direct access to Vulcan Road, Anil Drive, and Sartori Street, which are accessed via Espony Drive. While the subdivision doesn't directly abut Espony Drive, it is a standalone subdivision and all lots need to have that physical and legal access. Which is why that condition is placed on the subdivision. Condition number six B states, prior to submitting the final subdivision plat application, the applicant, its successors and assign shall improve Espony Drive to the specifications required by the county subdivision regulations, typical road section number three. Specifically, it says, this will include a three lane approach onto Canyon Ferry Road. In reviewing the subdivision file, this condition of approval was likely placed on the proposal for a few reasons. The first is that the traffic impact study that was submitted with the preliminary plat application included the recommendation that the developer improve Espony Drive to Lewis and Clark County Typical Section number three and include a three lane approach onto Canyon Ferry Road. Furthermore, at the time of preliminary plat review, Dan Carlin, Lewis and Clark County engineer, stated, my concern is continuity and alignment of roadways, specifically the approach onto Canyon Ferry Road. The intersection should align with the left turn lane added, as discussed with the applicant. The overall road network appears to have been designed with a holistic approach, which will lead to better traffic flow and control. Traffic from the Fox Crossing subdivision to the north will certainly add traffic to the newly built roads within the four subdivisions proposed. So that was Mr. Carlin's comment. At the time of preliminary plat review, MDT provided a comment stating that they, that they had reviewed the proposed subdivision and that the applicant would need to apply for an approach permit for the existing approach onto Canyon Ferry Road and that they'd need contact information or to contact, excuse me, the Butte District Traffic Engineer and Maintenance Chief for that approach permit. So that was what happened at the time of preliminary plat and likely influenced this condition of approval. Since then, Mr. Smith has been working towards completing his conditions of approval. And he reached out to MDT and MDT provided comments on July tenth of twenty twenty four from their Systems Impact Division indicating that MDT is not in favor of the three lane approach as the existing approach appears to be designed to at least a school bus. It has curb returns and it appears the drainage works. MDT did suggest allowing reconstruction up to the existing approach surfacing, then installing a new stop sign, stop bar and center line striping for fifty feet. After those comments were received, there was a subsequent meeting that was held with MDT. At that meeting, Mr. Smith and his representative from Casney and associates was there along with county planning and public work staff. And at that meeting on July twenty ninth, MDT reiterated their preference that they would prefer to see this approach remain as is, a two lane approach rather than that three lane approach. After that meeting, Dan Carlin, the county engineer, provided a memo to planning staff indicating that he is fine with the proposed modification. And specifically, the memo states, upon discussion with MDT traffic staff, they believe the two way left turn lane will allow eastbound traffic to clear the intersection and not cause large queues on Espony. I concur with this assessment. And that memo that I just cited is in your packets in an exhibit. One last element of this condition is that the subdivision regulations required that intersections shall conform to the requirements of the Lewis and Clark County Public Works Manual. Mr. Carlin addressed this requirement and he stated in that memo, the intersection as it's currently, currently constructed provides approaches that are less than fifteen degrees from a right angle when lines are drawn from approach to approach. While not a perfect right angle, four way intersection, this alignment is acceptable. So essentially, the, the intersection that he's talking about is Espony Drive, Canyon Ferry Road and, and the road just to the south. So that's the staff analysis, some of the findings of fact that are included in, in the staff report. As part of staff's review, we solicited comments from agencies that could be affected by the modification of the approach, which we determined could be MDT, Lewis and Clark County Public Works, the Helena School District Transportation Division, and the East Valley Fire District, and our County Flood Plane Administrator. We received three comments. One was from MDT indicating that they concur that the two lane approach is sufficient. Dan Carlin provided the memo that I just spoke about. He also, after this packet was uploaded, provided a written email indicating that he is in favor or is in support of this modification. And just for the record, I will hand this out to you. Yeah. So, and then lastly, our flood plane administrator indicated that there are no flood plane concerns. We also sent out adjacent landowner notices, posted signs onsite. And to date, we've received no public comments regarding the proposed modification. So with all that information in front of you, the staff report the staff report includes findings of fact and conclusions as they pertain to the primary review criteria and how those would be impacted by keeping the approach as is. Specifically, the review criteria that are substantially impacted by the modification would be to impacts to local services and specifically roads and traffic. Compliance with the subdivision regulations. And the provision of legal and physical access to each parcel within the proposed subdivision. I'm happy to pause here and answer any questions, or if you'd like, we can go over those findings and conclusions specifically.
Thank you very much. We'll pause for questions if there are any right now. And maybe prior to that, I don't know if the applicant or applicant's representative would like to add anything to the record? If there's any interest, you're welcome to address the commission now if you'd like. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name's Kim Smith, seventy five ten Applegate Drive. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. This is when this was first conceived, I first started working on this thing. It was basically ten years ago. And at that point in time, Canyon Ferry Road had not been improved. It didn't have the center turn lane in it. So as we worked through these things, now I'm not talking about the approval, I'm talking about me thinking about it. And so originally, when they, when we thought a little about three lanes, we did not think about the fact that now there's a center turn lane, or at least I didn't. Also, this is kind of clumsy and a pain to review four different subdivisions. But in honesty, if you don't, you, because of the court decisions and the water rules that changed, you don't have enough water to do more than about six or eight lots on a single parcel land. I don't care if it's five hundred acres, you still don't have the water. So when I started doing this, I kind of purposely looked for properties that I could aggregate, not aggregate, that are adjacent to each other. So that's why you guys are straddled with four different subdivisions and I just wanted to let you know that I know it's not ideal, but it's basically the way I thought that I had to do it. And I'm available for any question.
I remembered that, but that was a very good explanation for focusing on here at the time. Just a question for me. The staff reports and the information, the proposed changes, the way it's laid out, you're good with that? You have everything and you are in agreement?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Smith? Yes, ma'am.
Your comments regarding water availability. How will these lots, are they individual wells or do you have them?
They're individual wells and the water right that's associated with each lot gives each person an allotment. So if there's ten acre feet and there's five lots, each lot gets two acre feet. There is a move in the legislature to change things to make, and I'm not sure, but I've been talking to some people, so that in the future, individual lots that are created will have either one or two acre feet, which is, which is all you need. I mean, there's, there's one acre tracts out there that have ten acre feet of water and they can use it. So, you know, I think they're moving in the right direction to protect our water supply.
I, this judicial determination that the way we've been doing it hasn't, we're not going to do it that way anymore. It's kind of added confusion for a lot of people in your position. And I appreciate your taking it seriously and addressing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Smith at this time? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Okay, yes, let's go over the findings that have been impacted by this proposed amendment and discuss them if we could. You can present them and we can discuss them.
Sounds good. So the primary review criteria will start with make sure I've got the correct staff report right here.
Second round, page four, impacts to local services?
Yes, yeah, thank you. So with regard to agriculture, water, users, facilities and agriculture, there were no impacts to those review criteria, impacts to local services, findings of fact regarding roads and traffic. Legal and physical access will be provided to the lots via the proposed internal and external road network that'll connect on the south side to Sartori Street, Espona Drive and Canyon Ferry Road. Into the north, an extension of Lavender Drive.
So maybe I'm just thinking that the great majority of the findings from the original approval have not changed.
Correct.
So if we might just focus on those things that are, are changed or different than, because I think the, the findings that have not changed are still, they're intact and they are, they have been approved and all of that. So those findings that are related to the amendment, I think, is really what we need to address. I'm getting the head nod. Mr.
Yep, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, so as these conditions of approval are being modified, so you're amending what those modifications are in the conditions of approval and addressing any of those changes throughout the conditions based upon what you're rearranging or what you're amending. So anything that has been previously approved by the board still remains. So you don't have to go back and reapprove what you've already approved. But you do need to address any of the amended changes
Right.
and discussing those impacts.
Good, and I think that's what I was thinking. So so I'll just lay that out there and you, you have a better handle on the, some of the areas that have been impacted in terms of finding. So we'll talk, I'll let you lead us in and then we'll take it from there.
Okay, sounds good. And I guess just to clarify, so page seven is the start of the review criteria. Page four that we were talking about, that is, that comes from the staff report initially.
Yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, I can say that impacts to agriculture, that finding of fact essentially says that the modification will not have any additional impacts on agriculture. And there's a conclusion associated with that. And the same goes for impacts on agricultural water users. I've moved on to page eight. It's not going to have any additional impacts on agricultural water users besides those that were already stated in the findings of fact and conclusions from the staff report on, in two thousand and twenty. Impacts to local services, roads and traffic, that's where the situation of the amendment has led to a few new details. I will say, the presentation that I just gave summarized these, these findings of fact.
Right, and so the amendment is moving from a three lane approach to a two lane approach and that the reason for that is because, or one of the big reasons for that is because MDT, who, their approach is coming onto Canyon Ferry Road, which is theirs, has said that they believe it to be unnecessary and they recommend against it. After further review, our county engineer agrees, the applicant has no problem with that as well. And as described on the record by the applicant, from contemplation of these subdivisions, some of the conditions have changed and one improvement came for a road with a churn lane and those kinds of things. So it has been essentially deemed less necessary, unnecessary at this time by, by MDT. And but it was approved with three lanes in the project. So in order to reduce that, we have to go through this process. Commissioners, you want to talk about anything in regard to the findings related to roads and traffic?
I think the, Mr. Chair, I, I think that the, I mean, that there was not originally a mid turn lane on Canyon Ferry Road is a substantial difference that, that takes care of any problem that might have been created without that.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'm confused by the, the presentation, the document that we are looking at. Can you point to me the page where it actually says, or is that not included in this?
So with regard, Mr. Chair Commissioner Payne, with regard to impacts on local services, some of the findings of fact.
Page?
Page eight and page nine. And I think one of those, finding of fact number six talks about Dan Carlin's current assessment and his statement that he concurs with MDT's staff analysis, that the two way left turn lane will allow eastbound traffic to clear the intersection and not cars, cause large queues on Espona Drive, given anticipated peak hour traffic distribution. So I think that kind of speaks to what you just mentioned.
For sure.
Among with others.
There is no conflict. I mean, there's no
No, I'm just, where, where's the part we need to approve or to put into, you know, to the amendment or what, because we've had hearing on this before.
Well, the, the meeting we had before was just to allow him to make this application.
Okay.
So this is the actual application. These are some of the findings that have changed in terms of Engineer Carlin's more, more recent assessment as well as MDT's preferred approach makeup. They would prefer it not to be a three lane approach and it'd be a two lane approach. Mr. Carlin concurs. But because it was in the original approval, we have to change that or consider changing that if we're going to agree. So these are the, are the modifications to the findings that have been at least presented to us at this point.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Item number four, I think, is critical too. It just says that MDT is not in favor of the older three lane approach. And they prefer the two lane approach since the changes on Canyon Ferry Road have been done.
Well, I for one, turn to the experts for their recommendation and both MDT, our engineer, the applicant agree that traffic can be handled sufficiently with a two lane intersection there, especially with the improvements to Canyon Ferry Road. All of that is a part of the consideration for me. Anything else on that, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, Mr. Chair, so that's impacts on local services as they relate to roads and traffic. Local services includes an assessment to things such as school and emergency services. There are two findings of fact there. One that we did reach out to the school district number one, Transportation Division, and they didn't provide any comments back indicating concern with this. And with regard to emergency services, we also reached out to the East Valley Fire District regarding the modified approach and we did not receive any comments back from them about that as well.
And those are excellent discussion points because if we made this modification and a fire truck couldn't turn in there or a school bus couldn't get into the, these, if they were planning to get into these subdivisions and couldn't get in there, that would, that would make a difference. And it would be more challenging for us to move forward, but that's not the case. We haven't heard from them that that's going to be a problem. It looks like in terms of the standards, public works and MDT standards that it is a typical intersection that we see on a regular basis, two lanes rather than three, so it should handle normal traffic.
Mr. Chair, and yeah, MDT even acknowledges the fact that it's designed and can accommodate a school bus.
Okay, thank you, yes. Any other thoughts, comments around that? Okay, let's move forward.
Okay, so those are the findings of fact. Do we want to address the conclusions at a separate time or do we want to do that now?
Let's do that now.
Okay. So yeah, with regard to the conclusion, the proposed modification of the conditions of approval will not have impacts on water, wastewater, solid waste, utilities, substantial to schools, emergency services and parkland under the local services. All identified impacts to water, wastewater, solid waste, utilities, schools and emergency services and parkland. Those were established at the time of preliminary approval on November twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty two, or two thousand and twenty. The proposed modification to the conditions of approval will have impacts to roads and traffic under local services. As stated in the findings of fact above, these impacts to local services will be mitigated by the imposed amended condition of approval number six B when completed.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions, comments about that conclusion? So condition six B, it's just that the, maybe give us a highlight on what six B is.
Yeah.
I know what it is, but I want to put it on the record.
Mr. Chair, condition number six B is the condition that ready here for you. Prior to submitting the final subdivision plat application, the applicant's successors and signs shall improve Espona Drive to the specifications required by the county subdivision regulations. Typical Road Section number three, and this will include a three lane approach onto Canyon Ferry Road. So this modification would eliminate that last sentence. This will include a three lane approach onto Canyon Ferry Road. But the remainder of that condition, that they need to improve Espona Drive to the specifications required by the county subdivision regulations, Typical Road Section number three will remain and they will be required to complete that.
Right. Thank you. Any questions? The conclusion and what it's related to. Okay. All right, let's move.
Yeah, for sure. With regard to findings of fact on the natural environment, there's not going to be any additional impacts to the natural environment. There's a conclusion that reiterates that. Same with wildlife. The modification will not have any additional impacts on wildlife beyond those already stated in the findings of fact and conclusions from November twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty. And there's a conclusion that reiterates that. Impacts to wildlife habitat again will not have any additional, this, I should say, this modification to condition number six B will not have any additional impacts on wildlife habitat. And there's a conclusion that states that. And then impacts on public health and safety. The proposed modification will not have any additional impacts on public health and safety beyond those already stated in the findings of fact and conclusions from November twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty. The last one, comply, oh, excuse me, there's more, compliance with the subdivision regulations. This finding of fact pertains to the subdivision regulations eleven H thirteen, which states that horizontal and vertical alignment of streets shall conform to the requirements of the Lewis and Clark County Public Works Manual. That was addressed by Mr. Carlin in his memo. And he states that the intersection as it's currently constructed provides approaches that are less than fifteen degrees from a right angle when lines are drawn from approach to approach, and he believes that this approach does substantially meet its public works requirements.
Right, and is that, is that, is that a fact that's changed since the original approval?
Have the public works manual changed?
No, that, this finding. This is, number two is an addition?
Yes.
Yeah.
This number, finding of fact number two, it just restates that
That it still works. The proposed intersection still works and this is why it works.
Correct.
Yeah, so Commissioners, I think that's important to, just to point out that that finding, number two, wasn't part of the original findings or was it the fifteen degree?
And I think the last statement, Mr. Chair, this alignment is acceptable.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
And I think that condition or And I think, um, that condition, um, or, excuse me, the finding that I have there is included right now. Because when the preliminary plat was initially reviewed, Mr. Carlin's comment indicated that he wanted to see alignment of, uh, the intersections. Um, and so this is, as we're looking at this intersection, um, in light of MDT's comments, he's saying that in review of this intersection, it does appear that it meets the public works manual, um, because, uh, it is less than 15 degree, um, angle.
Right. Okay. Yes. That's, I wanted to make sure we just talked about that a little bit. Okay.
So the conclusion there is the proposed modification to the conditions of approval will not have impact on compliance with subdivision regulations. Um, compliance with the subdivision regulations, um, as set forth, um, by the Board of County Commissioners, those findings and conclusions, um, uh, that were reviewed in November 24th, 2020. Remain.
Thank you. Questions, commissioners, comments about the conclusion? Okay.
Uh, moving on to compliance with survey requirements, there's not going to have any additional impacts on survey requirements associated with this modification of condition.
Okay.
Um, with regard to provision of easements within and to the proposed subdivision, uh, for the installation of any planned utilities, there's not going to be any additional impact, um, on the provision of utility easements associated with the condition of approval or modification of condition. And then lastly, provision of legal and physical access to each parcel. Um, the Copper Smith subdivision and the three adjacent, um, and concurrently reviewed subdivisions will be served by Esponin, Esponin Drive, um, and the Canyon Ferry Road approach. The modify, if the modification is approved, the applicant will be required to obtain an approach permit. Um, and, uh, per MDT comments on July 10th, 2024, it's recommended that Esponin Drive be improved to the existing approach surfacing with installation of a stop sign, uh, a stop bar and 50 feet of center line striping.
That existed in the original, essentially.
In the original, um, approval, I, so at the time of preliminary approval, MDT didn't have any specific comments on how they wanted to see the approach designed. Um, this, uh, uh, language about, uh, recommending the Esponin Drive be improved up to the existing approach, uh, surfacing, not widening, widening it, um, but instead installing a stop sign, stop bar and 50 feet of center line striping is their most recent, um, comment that we received.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments about that? And likely, um, if things went along as they were originally planned and approved, uh, when they got to the point of asking for an approach onto MDT, they would have then addressed all of those conditions or recommended conditions at that time, saying this is what you need to do to get an approach, stop sign, all of those things. So likely. Okay. Anything else?
That is the last review criteria.
Okay. And, um, no new conditions related?
Uh, Mr. Chair, there's no new conditions, just the modification of that condition six B, which removes the, the language.
Right. Okay. So commissioners, any questions about what we've heard related to findings, conclusions and the modification proposal?
No.
Okay. How about, um, public comment in this item? Any public comment? Any further public comment or anything further from our guests? Okay. Nothing further. All right, commissioners, um, we would need, uh, a motion to approve the findings of fact as we have discussed. And maybe we'll discuss further and the conclusions.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
And a second to approve the modified findings and, or additional findings and, uh, conclusions as presented and discussed. Further discussion about these commissioner, commissioners?
Uh, just for clarification, we are only talking about the, um, Copper Smith subdivision at this point, right? We're not doing all four together. This is one. Okay. Just want to make sure it's clear on the record.
Correct. So is there anything further about the findings?
No.
Thank you for walking through those with us. And the great majority of the findings, uh, essentially have not changed. So the ones related to traffic and, and, uh, local services are the ones we focused the majority of our time on and, uh, discussed those changes. Anything else you'd like to add prior to?
Uh, no, not right now.
Uh, so commissioners, we have a motion in a second about the findings and conclusions at this time on the table. Uh, anything further? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, uh, modification, the slight modification to, uh, six B, conclude, uh, condition six B and the modification request for Copper Smith overall here. Commissioners, we need a motion based on our findings.
And if I could just jump in.
Oh, you've got it on the.
Motion, yeah, for findings of fact. And then, um, I think there was a motion to accept conclusion.
We did.
Okay. Excellent. And okay. Sorry, I missed.
Motion to approve, modification of conditional approval. Okay. That's, that's where we are.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the motion. Um, the modification of conditional approval, uh, for number six B as of the Copper Smith subdivision as presented by this staff report.
Second.
And second to approve the modification of condition of approval, number six B, Copper Smith subdivision as presented and discussed by us. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. We're going to move on to the next one. I have a question. So the next item on the agenda is a request modification of condition of approval for Wordsmith subdivision.
Do we have to, uh, do, do we have to, uh, approve the global motion?
We did. That was the, that was the.
So that, that's, that.
Covered. Yep. Okay. So I'm going to ask, um, staff and maybe, and our attorneys here, in terms of the next three, um, the modification is most, and it's a different subdivision, but it's an identical modification. Can we, um, bring the record forward from Copper Smith? And add it to this record so that discussion is there. Uh, present the, present the modification, ask for public comment and, um, not have to re uh, discuss in, in depth that we have been, that we just did. Is that, I don't know if there's a option there for bringing that record forward and making it part of our next couple? How that would work? Or do we need to just do what we just did?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, so, uh, let Ms. Ward jump in whenever she wants to, of course. Uh, but these are four separate subdivisions.
Yes.
So, um, if there's any similarities, I think that that could happen. But again, we need to be treating these as separate subdivisions. So I think the applicant did a wonderful job of explaining why this is in front of you, why it might look a little different, um, but they are four discrete and separate subdivisions. So there might be very similar, uh, factual situations. I think that could be brought forward in this case, but again, they're separate subdivisions. So, um, if there's any differences, I think that those need to be discussed on the record as you're making those. So.
Right. For the record, 20 years from now, somebody will file a lawsuit and want to say those people didn't do it right. And we want a record, not only for the Copper Smith, but also the other three subdivisions to protect the record.
So, uh, where I was going, uh, is yes, absolutely. They're separate and we need to discuss them independently, but many of the parts of the record are going to be, um, identical or similar in terms of the findings. They're, they're a carbon copy of the findings. So, um, it's a starting place is all I was intending for that.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, yes, absolutely. I think it's a great starting place and that can be brought in, but I was just adding if there's anything different, that that should be discussed. So.
Okay. Great. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Um, so with that, commissioners, um, we're on, we're on, uh, Wordsmith now, and if we could bring the discussion and the record related to Copper Smith forward and add it to the record for Wordsmith, I think that would add to our, our conversation. We have that record as well. It's very similar. So. And then we'll go from there.
With all due respect, Mr. Hunthausen, I believe our learned counsel just said, we have to go through each of the facts, each, we have to do exactly the same thing for the Blacksmith subdivision that we did for the Copper Smith subdivision in order so that people can go back and say, okay, they did this on page 35. But here in this record, they didn't do it on page 47 when they were talking about the Wordsmith subdivision. I think we have to go through each of the steps. Um, and uh, Kim, or as, uh, Rachel has prepared to do this. And she doesn't want to cut any corners. And I think that was the point that Nico made.
Mr. Hash. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I guess, um, kind of go right, right in the middle of what both of you are saying. So if I'm not mistaken, everyone's using the same turning lane, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Make sure I'm talking correctly as well. So you guys, so the board's discussion and deliberations about the impacts for the changing of that turning lane, that's going to be the same for each of these subdivisions. So that's absolutely okay to say, we've already talked about this stuff. We've already addressed the impacts to a subdivision involving that same turning lane. That's absolutely okay to be, to, to bring that forward and say are similar discussions because it's the same impacts that are happening on each of these four subdivisions. So it's exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah.
If there's anything unique about those distinct subdivisions going after that turning lane, that would, I, that's what I was getting to about. You still need to discuss that.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. So that's why I wanted to bring the record forward. We've already discussed this. So that piece of it, um, bringing it forward, uh, and including it in the record for this discussion as well, uh, just brings more info, more, uh, more information in, into this record officially. It's all I wanted to do. So, um, commissioners, if there's understanding on that, it'd be great to bring the Copper Smith subdivision, uh, discussion and record into the Wordsmith. Uh, conditional approved subdivision record, modification record, if we could.
So moved.
Okay.
Okay.
Moved in second to bring Copper Smith discussion and record to the Wordsmith discussion and record. Uh, any comment on that? Any public comment? Okay, hearing then, commissioners, uh, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Okay. Now let's take up Wordsmith. Um, we have very similar discussion. And we have partial record there. Let's go over Wordsmith.
Absolutely. Um, uh, again, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, for the record, Rachel Ward, Planner with Community Development and Planning. Um, in front of you is a request to modify condition of approval number six B of the Wordsmith subdivision. Um, that condition of approval, uh, states, um, prior to submitting the final subdivision plat application, the applicant, its successors and assigned shall improve Esponin Drive to the specifications required by the county subdivision regulations, typical road section number three. This will include a three-lane approach onto Canyon Ferry Road. Um, the request is to eliminate that last sentence that requires that this will include a three-lane approach onto Canyon Ferry Road. Just to give some background, um, information, the Wordsmith subdivision is one of, uh, these four concurrently reviewed subdivisions approved on November 24th, 2020. Um, all four of these subdivisions have that interconnected, um, internal and external road network. Um, and all four subdivisions include that condition number six B. Uh, you'll see the Wordsmith subdivision is the subdivision highlighted in blue in front of you. Uh, and this is the preliminary plat. Uh, so the Wordsmith subdivision will create seven single-family residential lots with direct access to Vulcan Road and Bellows Court, um, which because of the interconnected road network, um, will, uh, essentially be accessed via Esponin Drive. Condition number six B was placed on the subdivision, um, uh, in, in part because of the traffic impact study that we discussed previously and because of comments that were, uh, issued, um, from Carlin, our county, um, engineer at the time of preliminary plat, uh, when this preliminary plat was reviewed. Uh, but again, on July 10th, 2024, MDT provided comments that they would prefer to see the approach, um, uh, on Esponin Drive to remain as a two-lane approach rather than to expand it, um, as required by this condition. Uh, so with that, that's, um, kind of just a high level overview of, of Wordsmith. It's, it's very similar to that Copper Smith that we just reviewed and I gave a, a more in-depth presentation about.
Thank you. Questions, commissioners, or board?
None.
Um, the applicant like to address the commission at all, uh, for this subdivision? Okay. Yes.
I, I see, um, one difference that I don't know if it needs to be explained or not, but, um, on the previous, um, subdivision, the owner is listed as Kim Smith Properties LLC. On this one, the owner is listed as Corey and Darcy Crum. And, um, Kim Smith is the applicant. Does that make a difference or why is that? Um, could you just clear that up for me?
For sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner, um, Payne. So, uh, the owner of this particular lot is Corey and Darcy Crum. When they went through the preliminary plat application process, um, they authorized, uh, Mr. Smith to submit an application on behalf of them for this proposed subdivision. Um, and have authorized, um, the extension and this modification of, um, the condition of approval of the preliminary plat.
Had they owned the property for a long time or did they just acquire this from Mr. Smith or how did this? Longer than you have owned the adjoining property?
Uh, oh, wait. Yeah. Mr. Smith, you'd come up and introduce yourself and, and answer Commissioner Payne's questions if you're willing. Thank you.
Um, Kim Smith, 7510 Applegate Drive.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, I'm not sure exactly how long or he's been there, but he's been there for quite a while. And, uh, when I started doing this, we got together and came up with an arrangement, uh, some financial benefit for him and for me to package these all together and do them. Timelines, I'm not 100% sure about.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure this was not a statement made, it was an oversight or something. This is really the way it's supposed to be, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Kim.
Okay. Let's talk about those findings that are up for modification here.
Okay.
Or add additions or subtractions, modification. We'll go with that.
Modification for sure. Um, so Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we'll start on page seven. This, uh, is the review criteria. Um, and we'll begin with impacts on agriculture. Um, uh, this proposed modification is not going to have any additional impacts on agriculture. Um, and there's a conclusion to that, uh, effect as well.
Okay.
Um, impacts on agricultural water users, uh, proposed modification to the condition of approval will not have any additional impacts on agricultural water users. Um, and there's a conclusion, uh, to that effect as well. Uh, impacts on local services, uh, findings regarding roads and traffic. Um, I gave a, a bit of a presentation, um, with the, the Copper Smith subdivision, but essentially, uh, with the preliminary approval of the Wordsmith subdivision, um, uh, there was that condition of approval six B, which required them to establish the three-lane approach on Esponin Drive. At the time of preliminary plat, that traffic impact study, um, At the time of preliminary plat, that traffic impact study indicated that it was recommended that they include a three lane approach on Esplan Drive. Mr. Dan Carlin, county engineer, indicated that he had concerns about continuity and alignment of the roadways. He would like to see a left turn lane added as discussed with the applicant. However, on July tenth, MDT indicated that they are not in favor of the three lane approach as the existing approach appears to be designed to at least school bus. It has curb returns and appears that drainage works. They did include their preference that the existing approach remain as is with the installation of a new stop sign, stop bar and center line striping for fifty feet.
So just to make sure we discuss this properly, Commissioners, and feel repetitive, but MDT has recommended a two lane versus a three lane, which was originally contemplated in the subdivision proposal. And after further review, Mr. Carlin concurs essentially that two lane will still work and that that provides all the service necessary for local services and the impacts on local services will be minimal or they don't change essentially with the two lane versus the three lane.
Correct.
Commissioners, would you like to discuss that any further? Okay.
Yeah, with regard to the remaining criteria under local services, regard to school, we did reach out to school district, number one transportation division. They provided no comments back as well as with regard to emergency services, we reached out to the East Valley Fire District and they also did not provide any comments back about the proposed modification.
So important, important to recognize again, reiterating, but important to recognize that schools and fire and local emergency services will, with this modification, will remain, they will have access and it'll be adequate access. Two lane versus a three lane approach. All right, you want to talk the conclusion?
Sure, absolutely. So that conclusion, the proposed modification to the conditions of approval will not have impacts on water, wastewater, solid waste, utilities, schools, emergency services and parklands under local services. All of the identified impacts to those local services were set forth by the Board of County Commissioners and the findings of fact and conclusions when the subdivision was reviewed on November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. However, the proposed modification to the conditions of approval will have impacts to roads and traffic under local services stated in the findings of fact above. These impacts to local services will be mitigated when that condition six B is completed.
And just another point, I mean, it's, the access is on to MDT's road. They're saying this is what we want and need. So what was proposed before is not not agreed to by the entity that, the jurisdiction that owns the, the road. So this will comply with their wants and needs.
This is correct.
Anything further, Commissioners on that? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, moving forward with the natural environment, not going to have any additional, this proposed modification is not going to have any additional impacts on the natural environment. There's a conclusion that essentially reiterates that. The same for wildlife. The proposed modification to the condition of approval six B will not have any additional impacts on wildlife. And there's a conclusion that reiterates that. With regard to wildlife habitat, the proposed modification will not have any additional impacts on wildlife habitat. And lastly, with regard to public health and safety, the proposed modification will not have any additional impacts on public health and safety beyond those already stated in the findings of fact and conclusions from November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty.
Okay.
Excellent.
Anything else?
Yeah, the last one I, I no, sorry, I keep saying it's the last one. It's not. Compliance with subdivision regulations. I think this is one to talk about. So our subdivision regulations, chapter eleven H thirteen state horizontal and vertical alignment of streets shall conform with the requirements of Lewis and Clark County Public Works Manual. And again, Mr. Cartland provided a comment dated September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, a memo to planning staff indicating that the approach is currently constructed. As it's currently constructed, provides approaches that are less than fifteen degrees from a right angle when the lines are drawn from approach to approach. So essentially his statement that this alignment is acceptable.
Right. And that, I mean, that's important to it's not, it's not outside of the bounds of normal function.
Correct.
Within the, within the standards and agreement.
Compliance with the survey requirements. The modified condition of approval is not going to have any impacts on the survey requirements. There's a conclusion that, that essentially reiterates that. Proposed modification of condition six B will not have any additional impacts on the provisions of utility easements as well. With regard to provision of legal and physical access to each parcel within the proposed subdivision, the Wordsmith subdivision and the three adjacent concurrently reviewed subdivisions will be served by Esplan Drive and the Canyon Ferry Road approach, which is required, the modification, if the, excuse me, if the modification is approved, the applicant will be required to obtain an approach permit from MDT. For any improvements on the MDT right of way, they've recommended that Esplan Drive be improved up to the existing approach surfacing with installation of a stop sign, stop bar and fifty feet of center line striping.
Which again, I would say is normal. It's what MDT does. So and that was part of the original proposal as well. It would have been having to get, having to get an approach permit, but they wanted this modification prior to doing it. Okay.
And that's the last review criteria.
Commissioners. Questions, comments related to any of these findings? Okay. How about public comment on what we've heard so far? Any public comment? All right, hearing none, Commissioners. You might put the there you go. So the findings of fact and conclusions, we wrapped them together, the last subdivision discussion. Welcome to them separately or together if you'd like. A motion please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the findings of fact as recommended by the staff report as well as the conclusions as recommended by the staff report.
Second, move to second and approve the findings and conclusions as presented and discussed. Commissioners, further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, is there a motion to approve modification of conditional approval?
So move.
Second.
Move to second and approve a modification of conditional approval for conditional approval six B for the Wordsmith subdivision, just draw that out further. Any further discussion, Commissioner? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, there's two. Commissioners, do you want to take a short break?
I'm fine.
Or do you want to keep going?
I'm fine.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item.
Kim Smith in, in limbo for any longer than we have to.
Let's keep, let's move on to the next item. Request for modification for conditional approval of Blacksmith subdivision.
Okay. Again, good morning. For the record, my name is Rachel Ward, Planner with Community Development and Planning. In front of you was a request to modify condition of approval number six B tied to the Blacksmith subdivision. As I mentioned previously, the Blacksmith subdivision is one of four concurrently reviewed subdivisions approved on November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. All four of these subdivisions use that interconnected internal and external road network. And all four of these subdivisions include that condition six B, which the applicant is requesting to modify to eliminate the requirement that the approach on Esplan Drive be expanded to a three lane approach. You'll see in front of you, the Blacksmith subdivision is highlighted in orange in front of you. So the Blacksmith subdivision will create four commercial lots and seven single family residential lots with direct access to Anvil Drive and Sartori Street, which are ultimately accessed via Esplan Drive. Condition of approval number six B states, prior to submitting the final subdivision plat application, the applicant, its successors and assigns shall improve Esplan Drive to the specifications required by the county subdivision regulations, typical road section number three, and this will include a three lane approach onto Canyon Ferry Road. On July tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, MDT provided a comment that they would prefer to see the approach remain as a two lane approach rather than expand it as required by this condition. And yeah, that expansion, or excuse me, that condition was likely placed on that preliminary plat approval as a result of the traffic impact study, recommending that the approach be expanded to a three lane approach and from comments submitted by the Public Works Department indicating that they wanted to see the intersectional line with a left turn lane added as discussed with the applicant. Since receiving the July tenth, two thousand and twenty-four comments from MDT, county staff, planning staff, the applicant and their representative from Casney met with MDT and they, and I should say, Dan Carlin, county engineer, provided a planning memo stating, a memo to planning staff indicating that he believes the two-way left turn lane will allow eastbound traffic to clear the intersection and not cross large queues on Esplan Drive and essentially concurs with MDT's assessment. As the same with the previous subdivisions that we reviewed, we did solicit comments from agencies from MDT, Public Works, Helena School District, East Valley Fire District and the Flood Plan Administrator, and we received three comments. With that, if you want to go through the findings of fact and conclusions, we can.
Yeah, I, we, we will. Questions, Commissioners? And I'll do it this way this time, just recognizing that Copper Smith subdivision and Wordsmith subdivision have very similar requests and the, the records may be relevant and important, and I just want to make sure that they're connected. However, this is an independent subdivision and we must talk about it independently. So I'll just leave it at that. How about Mr. Smith, anything you'd like to add about this subdivision? Okay, now, how about public comment so far on this? Okay, any questions, Commissioners? All right, let's go over the findings.
Okay. So starting on page seven, that's where criteria for review begin. Impacts to agriculture. The proposed modification will not have any additional impacts on agriculture. There's a conclusion that reiterates that finding. Impacts on agricultural water users. The proposed modification will not have any additional impacts on agricultural water users. With regard to impacts on local services. So the preliminary approval of the Blacksmith subdivision included that condition number six B, which required the establishment of the three lane approach on Esplan Drive. I went over the traffic impact study and the recommendation tied to that traffic to impact study. But I also noted Dan Carlin's comment both at preliminary plat indicating his concern with road alignment and the desire for a left turn lane. However, comments were provided from MDT on July tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. If there's anything else you want to add to, to that, the nine findings of fact.
That's the big change, right? I mean, originally a three lane approach. And at the time, thought to be necessary, but there were others that looked at it. MDT being the main body that looked at this and said, three lane approach is unnecessary. Mr. Smith gave comment earlier, I'll repeat that, that when the subdivision, these subdivisions were being first contemplated, that turn lane and Canyon Ferry Road may not have even existed at that time and now does. But MDT is the, the body, the jurisdiction that has has control over that approach and recommends against it. Mr. Carlin's second look says with the two lane, two lane approach, it still works. There is some alignment is there, but talking about the fifteen percent, which may not even gotten to yet, but we'll, we'll talk about that as well. However, the sorry, I was just reading at the same time, the three lane approach is deemed unnecessary by MDT and Mr. Carlin concurs at this time. Okay. Discussion, Commissioners, anything else you want to add?
Again, as we've, we talked, Mr. Chair, the change in the Canyon Ferry Road that you discussed changed the need for that three lane approach to a two lane approach and and it appears that both MDT and the county engineer are in agreement.
Thank you. Mr. McNally?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I just, I hear you say something, an indication here about, talk about the change in the three lane configuration of Canyon Ferry. And, and I just wanted to kind of speak to that just a little bit. So that three lane configuration did exist at the time of our original preliminary approval. So that isn't a factor here that changes or that brings about this change. And as we've
But the note, but the, the recognition that it's there is what, is what changed, what changed the approval.
It, it kind of helps facilitate the movement of traffic in that intersection there. And it leads to further support of that modification. So, but I, I just wanted to provide that.
Thanks for the clarification.
Tonight, I heard Mr. Smith say that when he was first contemplating this subdivision, that the changes to the Canyon Ferry road by the Department of Transportation were not even contemplated. He didn't say they didn't exist. He said they were just it was not a point of information that was any place on his radar. That's all.
Thanks. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Keeping on with local services, with regard to schools, there's a finding of fact that notes that we did provide or requested comments from the school district, number one transportation division, and no comments were received from them. With regard to emergency services, there's a finding that notes that no comments were provided from the East Valley Fire District regarding the proposed modification. And we have a, a conclusion about local services that essentially says the proposed modification to the condition of approval will not have impacts on water, wastewater, solid waste, utilities, schools, emergency services and parkland under local services. Impacts to those were reviewed at the time of preliminary plat on November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. However, the proposed modification will have impacts to roads and traffic under local services stated in the findings of fact above. And those impacts will be mitigated by the imposed amended condition of approval six B when it is completed.
Thank you. And it's important to point out that, you know, in the findings, whether local services, especially those that are, we talked about the school and fire, you know, if they're going to be impacted by this post modification and the findings are that likely not. And we didn't hear from them. And the, the intersection will still work from our best understanding with MDT's request as well as our county engineer. Okay.
Yeah, okay. So, um, I will say impacts to the natural environment. And if you wouldn't mind, I can also say impacts to wildlife, impacts to wildlife habitat and in impacts to public health and safety. There's going to be no additional impacts to these review criterias as a result of the proposed modification.
Right.
There are conclusions tied to that, to each of those review criteria. With regard to compliance with the subdivision regulations, the county subdivision regulations, specifically chapter 11 H13 states horizontal and vertical alignments of streets shall conform with the requirements of the Lewis and Clark Public Works Manual. And again, we do have that memo from Mr. Carlin stating that the approaches are less than 15 degrees from a right angle when the lines are drawn from approach to approach and that this alignment is acceptable and in compliance with the Public Works Manual.
And that's what I was referring to earlier. We said we'd, we'd get to that. So with this proposed amendment, then the intersection still works and it still is acceptable. It's important.
With regard to survey requirements, the proposed modification isn't going to have any impacts on survey requirements. Not going to have any additional impacts on the provision of utility easements. And there's conditions of approval or excuse me, conclusions associated with those two review criteria. And then lastly, provision of legal and physical access to each parcel. The Blacksmith subdivision in the three adjacent concurrently reviewed subdivisions will be served by Espolin Drive. In the approach on Canyon Ferry Road. The modification, if the modification is approved, the applicant will be required to obtain an approach permit from MDT for any improvements in the MDT right of way and per their July 10th, 2024 comment, they've recommended that Espolin Drive be improved up to the existing approach surfacing with installation of a stop sign, stop bar and 50 feet of center line striping.
Thank you. And again, I'll repeat what I've said before that, that the MDT, whether it was prior to this proposed modification or now would require an approach permit and that approach permit would have their conditions of approval, which are likely very similar to what we see here in terms of the stop sign, stop bar, center line striping, those kinds of things. Okay. Commissioners, any further comments about the findings and conclusions? How about public comment? Again, opportunity, what we've seen so far. All right, hearing none. Commissioners? Motion related to findings or findings and conclusions?
Mr. Chair, I would move to accept the findings of fact and conclusions as explained.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve findings and conclusions as presented and discussed. Commissioners, further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. How about a motion to approve the modification of additional approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the modification condition of approval for number six B of the Blacksmith subdivision. Commissioners, further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. We're moving along here. Next item on the agenda is request for modification of conditional approval of the Aerosmith subdivision.
Okay. Uh, good morning again. For the record, Rachel Ward, Planner with Community Development and Planning. In front of you is a request to modify condition of approval number six B, the Aerosmith subdivision. The Aerosmith subdivision is one of four concurrently reviewed subdivisions approved on November 24th, 2020. All four of these subdivisions use an interconnected internal and external road network and all of these conditions, all of these subdivisions include condition of approval number six B. Which is what the applicant is requesting to modify today. You'll see on the illustrations in front of you, the Aerosmith subdivision is highlighted in red. This Aerosmith subdivision will create 10 single family residential lots and one fire and utility lot. Direct access to the lots exists will be via Anvil Drive, which is accessed via Sartorius Street and ultimately Espolin Drive. Condition number six B was placed on the subdivision, which states prior to submitting the final subdivision plat application, the applicant, its successors and assigns shall improve Espolin Drive to the specifications required by the county subdivision regulations. Typical Road Section number three, and it states this will include a three lane approach onto Canyon Ferry Road. On July 10th, 2024, MDT provided comments to the applicant that they would prefer to see the approach remain as is. A two lane approach rather than expanded as the condition of approval requires. That condition of approval is most likely put on the subdivision as a result of the traffic to impact study, which recommended that this approach be expanded to a three lane approach. And because of comments from Public Works indicating concern with alignment of roadways, indicating that he would like to see intersections align with a left turn lane added as discussed with the applicant. At the time of preliminary plat, MDT did not provide any additional comments regarding that design. But as Mr. Smith has moved through meeting the conditions of approval, he had received a, a comment from MDT on July 10th of this year, indicating that they do not want to see that approach widened. Mr. Carlin, after a meeting, provided a memo to planning staff indicating that he believes that the two way left turn lane will allow eastbound traffic to clear the intersection and not cause large queues on Espolin Drive. And he concurs with MDT's assessment. Like the previous subdivisions that we just went through, we did solicit comments from agencies. We received three comments. One was from MDT indicating that they concur with the two lane approach. Being sufficient, Dan Carlin, the county engineer, provided a memo that I just spoke about and a follow up email that, that you have in front of you and our floodplain administrator indicated there's, there's no concerns there from a floodplain perspective. We have not received any public comments regarding the proposed modification with regard to any of the four subdivisions. So with that, the staff report in front of you includes findings of fact and conclusions and
Okay, thank you. We'll get to those in just a second. Any questions, commissioners at this point? Mr. Smith, would you like to address the commission related to this subdivision? Okay. How about public comment thus far? Any public? Hearing no public comment, I will just make the comment again that Copper Smith subdivision that we've discussed in that record, the Wordsmith subdivision in that record and the Blacksmith subdivision in that record are all relevant and are going to be very similar to this record and are tied together from that perspective. They are all the, the essentially the exact same request. Or four different subdivisions however, so we will go through it independently. All right, let's talk about the findings of fact.
Okay, so starting on page seven. Findings of fact, as they pertain to impacts on agriculture and a lump in agricultural water users. The staff concluded that proposed modification will not have any additional impacts on agriculture or agricultural water users as a result of the modified condition. And there's two conclusions that reiterate that statement. With regard to findings of fact, or excuse me, with regard to impacts on local services, specifically roads and traffic. This Aerosmith subdivision did include condition number six B, which required that three lane approach at Espolin Drive and Canyon Ferry Road to accommodate a northbound lane, a combination south and eastbound lane and a westbound lane. This was likely as a result of recommendations from the traffic impact study that was provided at the preliminary plat and also as a result of comments from Dan Carlin, indicating that he wanted to see the intersection align with the road to the south. As well as adding a left turn lane. MDT provided a comment on July 10th, 2024, indicating that they would not like to see the approach, the expanded. But the approach appears to be designed to at least a school bus and has curb. It has curb returns and appears that drainage works and that they would instead recommend reconstructing Espolin Drive up to the existing approach, resurfacing. And then installing a new stop sign and stop bar and center line striping for 50 feet of that approach. I can continue on.
Well, let's, let's just make the points we've made in the past here for this particular set of findings that the original, the original proposal had a three lane approach. And after furthering the process, MDT has said, you know, we put two lane approach is all that we would accept or we suggest. And though our county engineer at the time, the three lane approach seemed reasonable now has after discussing it with MDT and applicant, others that a two lane approach will still work. And its impact on those local services as you've been describing is minimal. And as I said, the intersection still works for those purposes. Stop signs and, and all of that that has to be done would have to be done at any time, either if it was two lane or three lane. As MDT would require their approach permit to include those conditions. So I just want to point that out and we can talk about it more as we go along, but these. Well, I'll, I'll just stop there first for the moment. Go ahead. Unless commissioners, you have anything else you want to?
Okay, um, so those are impacts to local services with regard to roads and traffic. With regard to schools, we did reach out to school district number one transportation division and they did not provide any comments regarding the proposed modification. With regard to emergency services, we did reach out to the East Valley Fire District and receive no comments back from them regarding the proposed modification.
And that would be a big concern if our fire folks or our school folks were saying that this modification presents a change, a difficulty for them or a hazard for them. And that hasn't been the case.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
So the conclusion tied with local services, the proposed modification to the conditions of approval will not have impacts on water, wastewater, solid waste, utilities, schools, emergency services and parkland under local services. But the proposed modification will have impacts to roads and traffic under local services stated in the findings of fact above. These impacts to local services will be mitigated by the imposed amended condition of approval number six B when it's completed.
So the proposed modification of six B provides all of the necessary. It doesn't impact in a negative way, the, all of the utilities and, and local services that you've just described. So three lane or two lane, they still have the same kind of access and well, access might be the word. It's, the impact is not negative. It's not negative. You're not supposed to say it that way. It's not, it doesn't impact them in a negative way, I guess I should say.
For sure. And I'll just reiterate that this six B as modified will still require that prior to submitting the final subdivision plat application, the applicant, its successors and its signs shall improve Espolin Drive to the specifications and requirements of the county subdivision regulations, and that will include an approach permit. So
And doesn't impact any of the other internal roads and the other conditions of approval and those kinds of things that have, are not requesting modification.
Correct.
They still stand. Commissioners, anything else? Okay.
Okay, I'm going to rope in the next ones. Impacts on the natural environment, impacts on wildlife, impacts on wildlife habitat and impacts on public health and safety will not be impacted as a result of the proposed modification. And there's conclusions associated with each, with each of those review criteria. With regard to compliance with the subdivision regulations, the subdivision regulations note in chapter 11 H13 that horizontal and vertical alignment of streets shall conform with the requirements of Lewis and Clark County Public Works Manual. And that memo from Dan Carlin, kind of his current assessment. He notes that regarding compliance, the intersection as it's currently constructed provides approaches that are less than 15 degrees from a right angle when the lines are drawn from approach to approach and that in his assessment, this alignment is acceptable. And
I was just going to say, and Mr. Carlin's comments via email are that he is okay with the modification.
Correct. Uh, so the proposed modification to the conditions of approval will not have impact on compliance with the subdivision regulations. We can move on to survey requirements. The proposed modification will not have impacts on survey requirements. The modification will also not have any additional impacts on provision of utility easements. And there's conclusions that are tied to those two review criteria.
Okay.
And then lastly, provision of legal and physical access to each parcel. The Aerosmith subdivision and the three adjacent and concurrently reviewed subdivisions will be served by the Espolin Drive and Canyon Ferry Road approach. The modification, if it's approved, the applicant will still be required to obtain an approach permit from MDT for any improvements in the MDT right of way. And that's going to include kind of, as you say, all the standard requirements that MDT has for approaches. And yeah, that final conclusion, the proposed modification will have impacts on the provision of legal and physical access as stated in the findings of fact above. But based on the findings of fact, or excuse me, the provision of legal and physical access as set forth in the findings of fact will be addressed by the imposed amended condition number six B when it's completed.
So even though these modifications will have impacts to those review criteria, it's not to the detriment of any regulation or acceptable standards. As has been described. Right? Commissioners, further discussion or comments related to this?
I, I do have one question that's come to mind and that
Okay.
And I, in, in dealing with the schools, this subdivision actually is closer to East Helena Schools than it is Helena District number one and, and yet your inquiries have gone to District one. Is there a reason for that?
Check the map, but I believe that it is Mr. McNally if you want to.
District, District one is, is what we've been using for this particular sub, these four subdivisions. We've recognized District one is the school that's
They're, they're related to District one school. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Good question. Okay. Anything else, commissioners? How about any further public comment related to anything heard thus? Okay, anything else, commissioners? How about any further public comment related to anything you've heard thus far? Okay, would you put the motions up there? Commissioners, how about a motion related to findings, findings and conclusions?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would move to, um, uh, approve the, uh, to accept the findings of fact as recommended by the staff report.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the findings as presented. Commissioner, um, there's been some.
And conclusions, I suppose. We want to modify it, do findings and conclusions together.
If you, would you like to modify your motion?
Well, I'm going to modify that to be findings and conclusions. I think that's the way we did it before, so.
Findings and conclusions?
Yes, I second that.
Moving second to approve findings and conclusions. I was just going to add that, you know, it, there's been a lot of discussion as well, so, including those discussion pieces and parts as well. So commissioners, anything else like to discuss about this? All right, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, is there a motion related to the overall modification?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the modifications of conditional approval for, let's see, this one is Aerosmith. Subdivision, as explained by staff.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the modification to condition of approval number six for Aerosmith as presented. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, thank you for your endurance here today. Sitting through the process. Okay. Commissioners, uh, we are at that time in our meeting where we will take public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the commission, but not on today's agenda. Is there any public comment? Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, um, I hope to avoid this in the future. I want you to know I appreciate your time, particularly planning, and, uh, I'm glad I'm not paying everybody by the hour.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate your comments. Anything else, commissioners? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Hearing none, thank you very much. We will stand adjourned.